Good evening, Mayor and Council. It is now 7:00 PM and we are live online.
Hey, everybody. Good evening. We're gonna start up. So it's 7 o'clock and we have a lot of new folks here. So just so you know, this is a workshop meeting. That means it's an informal meeting of the council. The council does its preparatory business prior to an official meeting. But in these meetings, we can also do community segments, which is what we're gonna do. So because it's informal, we don't do a pledge. We ordinarily do a pledge of allegiance to the flags that are behind us. But we won't do that this evening, because again, it's an informal meeting. I do need to do, see who's here on the council, so I'll just do that next. And pardon? You can't hear me? Any louder? Okay, so that's odd. Usually I don't have to get anywhere near the mic, so that's okay? All right, good. So as I said, the first thing I'll do is roll. And then we have one announcement that the city administrator has to do. And then we're gonna have a community segment on essay awards, all right? So hang on. I see our city attorney this evening, Christian. Nice to see you. And then council members, I see Molly Rhodes, Jeff Demansky, Mayor Lee Kiriyaku is here, Paloma Waque, Pam Weatherby, George Mansfield. So I see six of us. Amber Grant is excused. She's traveling this evening. And I see the city administrator, Chris White. Is there anyone representing the city online? Okay, so I think that's everyone. Chris, you had an announcement?
Do you wanna, let's do it after the other thing.
Okay, so let me know when you want to do it, but let's remember it. So this will be an announcement concerning water meters, which sounds very unexciting.
I can do it quickly. So we have sent out water bills for January, February, and March. People that didn't sign up to have their water meter transistors replaced are getting an automatic fine of $250. We have set an amnesty of three weeks, so that if you have this billing on your water meter, all you need to do is call our company that is doing this switchover, which is called Vepo. I'm gonna give you that number, which is 877-860-8376. Again, 877-860-8376. All you need to do is make an appointment. It can be for late in May. It could be in June. And then we will reverse the charge on your bill. Right now, about 85% of people have responded, but we do have several hundred people that have not responded. So if you haven't responded, please call that number, set up an appointment, we'll reverse the charge. No questions asked. After April 21st, that charge will stay. Thank you.
Okay, and this is just to encourage people to get the water meter upgrades that we've been doing. They'll be very cool, because you'll be able to see your usage real time. You'll be able to get a notice if you can't, if you have a leak, which would be very important for folks, that you only get a bill every three months. Okay, so I'm gonna turn over, this is a community segment, and it's the MLK Junior Essay Award winners. Bonnie, do you wanna come join us?
Hi, my name is Bonnie Champion, and I am honored to have our presentation for the Martin Luther King Essay Contest. So first, the organizations behind this are the Beacon Sloop Club and the Southern Dutchess Coalition. It was Pete Seeger's dream. He was 94 years old. Can you hear me? He was 94 years old, and he was worried that Martin Luther King Day was becoming a day off from school, day off from work, people not recognizing such incredible man, coming from the mouth of a very incredible man. And so he said he wanted to have a parade. So we've been doing this now for 11 years. And so we have, Kenya is going to say something that Jennifer McClinton wanted to say tonight. She is the president of the Southern Dutchess Coalition. So if you want to come up and do that.
So good evening, council. I don't wanna have my back to you guys. Good evening, parents and people in TV land. So I'm here on behalf of Jennifer McClinton and the Southern Dutchess Coalition team to give you the history of where this all came from. So it reads as, "How did it come to be the Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Celebration? In the year of 1977, a meeting was called by Ms. Barbara E. Baker, asking for representative from different organizations in Beacon, New York to come to her home. It was a very, very icy night. The meeting was scheduled to start at 8:00 PM. Ruth Goins showed up alone. Ms. Baker came to the door and was amazed to see that no one was there. She was greeted, and another as she stood there and said to her, 'Ms. Baker, where are the people?' She said, 'Goins, you are here, so the people are here.' I went in and I took my coat off, and she said, 'Goins, we're going to get started. The meeting is beginning now.' She said, 'Barbara, how can we start a meeting without people?' She said, 'Well, Goins, you are here, so the people are here. We can do what we can do if it's you and I.' I said, 'Come on, and what we can do with just you and I.' In a few minutes, the doorbell rang, and Jeanette Briscoe and Gemma Campbell were at the door. They were presenting the Alpha Kappa Alpha Woman. So we all sat there, the four of us. We were there from different organizations. The good thing being that there were men as well as women. We had a meeting prior to this. We were met with the men and had stated why we were there. So we organized ourselves and had someone to record, and we all thought about where we had come from. People came from all around, willing to share their information with the community, hungry to do something for the slain drum major of peace. It was amazing. As told by original founding member Ruth Goins, January 2011, reprinted upon request, the coalition was incorporated on April 14, 1981. Four years after that initial meeting, in 1986, the Southern Dutchess Coalition Community Mass Choir was formed by Charlene Stout with the help of Dorothy Medley. In 1994, Charlene, with the help of Jennifer Baker McClinton, formed the Southern Dutchess Youth Community Mass Choir. Roy Martin was in charge of the musical instruments. In 1996, the Southern Dutchess Youth Praise Dance Team was formed by Charlene Stout with the help of Dorothy Medley. Throughout the years, the coalition has continued to be vital. Quality assets to the residents of the Hudson Valley valley with their unwavering commitment to keep the dream alive. Not even the death of the beloved founder and chairperson Reverend Barbara E. Baker could extinguish the flame that was ignited on that cold, icy evening 46 years ago. And the work continues. Jennifer Baker McLean is the executive chairperson. Charlene Stout is the executive vice-chairperson and the musical coordinator. Matt Bowen, who passed away, who was a drummer to the drum, and he marched to the beat always. He did the annual parade coordinator, and Deacon Earl Wilson was a photographer. So we had asked that you, all of you, join us in the community on January 20th. Through to the weather, that event did not happen. But today, we have before us six scholars, amazing students, who took the time out to tell the story of why they believe they exemplify Dr. Martin Luther King. Thank you.
So we want to thank Mayor Kiriyaku and Ben Swanson, his assistants, the council people. We want to thank the police department, the Beacon City Police Department, the fire department, the Beacon City Schools, Matthew Landau, the superintendent, and his secretary, Vicki Jackson, who is just incredible. So the teachers that were involved with these kids tonight are from JV Forrestal, Ms. Fisher, Ms. Duffy, Ms. Keough, and Ms. Gall from Ronbault Middle School, Ms. Gonzalez, and from Glenham, Mr. Hoyle. So as Kenya said, the chairman of this was Matt Bowen, and sadly, he passed away in February. So we have two new chairmans for next year. Could they stand up? We have Christine Lathman and Joy Young. So they're going to be taking, thank you, they're gonna be taking over the essay contest. So we want to thank Pastor Perry from Springfield Baptist Church, and the Beacon Sloop Club, the Southern Dutchess Coalition, and also Rhinebeck Bank. Rhinebeck Bank, from the very beginning, this was the 11th year, they give $50 to each of the six winners. So 11 times 300. Rhinebeck Bank has donated $3,300 to the essay contest. All right, so we have one more announcement. Could you stand up, please? The great-grandmother of Kendra, it's her birthday today, this is Dora Shaw. Thank you so much. Happy birthday. All right, so we'll get started. We're gonna have the kids come up. We'll have Atlas Falls, go ahead, Atlas, and I'm gonna have you stand in a line right here. I'm gonna have you stand like right there, okay? All right, okay. And then we have, Alice is not here, right, Alice? We have, sorry. Atlas Courtney is a winner. She's not here. Gavin Berry is also not here. If you saw pictures from three years ago, Gavin Berry's best friend was a winner, and we have pictures of the two of them outside by the courthouse. It's so precious. So then we have, sorry. Edith Laborman, Evelyn Moreno, Amelia Scott, and second grader Kendra Young. They're gonna read a brief excerpt from their essays, and here you go.
Hello, my name is Atlas Costello Balt. I'm a sophomore from Beacon High School, and this is an excerpt from my essay. Every person has a dream, whether it be on a small scale or a large scale. Many people dream of things such as fame or love, but society's forward thinkers dream of one thing: progress. Martin Luther King's time was uncertain, with rampant racial tension and segregation. Racism was commonplace and often government-supported. In addition to being able to recognize problems, a civically aware citizen must be able to engage in critical thought surrounding the issue and reach different conclusions and/or come up with propositions to address the problem. It is the duty of humanity to fight for freedom, unity, and hope. It is the duty of humanity to stick together for the common good. It is the duty of humanity to keep the dream of Dr. King alive until it is completed. Thank you.
I'm Edith Laborman from Ms. Keough's class at JV Forrestal Elementary School, grade four. This is an excerpt from my essay. Dr. King's words still ring true today. In fact, they are more necessary than ever. The kids of my generation face many injustices and issues, including gun violence, climate change, and the loss of women's rights. Racial inequality remains a big problem. There's still a lot of work to be done, and we are all responsible for doing it. Even though I am just a kid, I know I can make an impact on the world, just like Dr. King did.
My name is Evelyn Moreno. I'm a senior at Beacon High School. Growing up with people of different backgrounds, ethnicities, and cultures taught me to accept my own and fuel it with the gasoline that is my voice. With my own Hispanic background, I plan to keep Martin Luther King's dream alive. I've never given hatred permission to stop me. I still find a bit of light through a dark tunnel, and by keeping King's dream alive, we can find more of that glint of prosperity, and all it takes is kindness.
My name is Amelia Scott from Ms. Gall's class, JV Forrestal Elementary School, second grade. Martin Luther King's dream was that people would not be judged by the color of their skin, but by their character. We keep his dream alive by treating people equally every day. For example, let everyone play in your game. Don't exclude people because of their skin color. You should be kind to one another no matter what they look like.
My name is Kendra Young from Ms. Colontwana's class, grade second grade. I try to be like Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. by always being nice to others. Look at my friends. We are all different colors, and Dr. King taught us no matter what race or differences, we have, we have, we could get along.
So we have their certificate, and I'll give you this after the picture. Atlas, can you read the name? All right, so, Atlas. And Amelia Scott. And Kendra Young. Okay, pictures?
What would you like?
We'd like you with pictures. Whoever in the council would like to be on it?
Sure.
Thank you. Okay, great job. So we have people who mark the papers, if anyone would like to, and Constantine, I must say this, Constantine did so much work for this. He printed the certificates. He did all kinds of things. And Tanya, thank you. Tanya Seeger brought the Martin Luther King poster. So this is all about the kids, all about Martin Luther King and Pete Seeger, and we thank you all. And anyone like to, Kenya, you want to come up and get in the picture? People who mark the papers, any parents who want to be in the picture, Sloop Club members? It's gonna be a big picture. You look so beautiful. Patricia is the president of the Sloop Club. Wow, look at this picture. We want a good picture for the newspaper. I'll stand next to you. I'll stand next to you. Is that good?
Anybody else want?
Okay, here we go.
Everybody look at the camera. Right, eyes. Okay? Good? Two more, all right? Smile. Two more. One more, ready, smile. A big smile you can get.
Big smile. Also, we had a rain vote tonight. When I was crossing the bridge, it was raining down there, and there was this big rain vote for where we came. Thank you, everyone, for your help. Thank you, Bonnie. I'm so glad you're here. Oh, I'm so glad, yeah. All right, so where are these kids? Let me see. Atlas, congratulations. Courtney, nope. Gavin, no.
I'll hold it for you if you want. Heretics.
Congratulations.
Are you a musician? What do you play?
No, I'm an artist. I make sculpture. I've had, yeah, nothing right now, but yeah. Was one of these yours? Oh, awesome. Congratulations. Okay, I can see the resemblance. Congratulations. Thank you.
Take care. Thank you.
Thanks, Atlas.
Thanks, Atlas.
Take the money and go.
I was that age, I was like petrified till I touched a microphone. I mean, she just like took it. And then the next time, I was so proud. I had to believe in her with that. Everybody else walked off.
Oh, okay.
It seems backwards.
And can we now mute without destroying the online? Or should we keep it on the whole time?
And the new chair has come tomorrow.
Oh, wow. Really?
Yep. The court paid for him, which was the best outcome I could get. What'd you say, Chris? The court paid for him. Yeah, and they're ordering tables.
Okay.
Oh, you're performing as well, Lydia? Oh, great.
Nice to see you all. If you want to stay for the next piece of the council meeting, stay. But we're gonna have to get started. We're gonna start up. Hey, Tom, chief. So the next segment is for the chief police. You've got an annual police report. And I think we've sent it to council, and you've got slides. You want to tee them up? Are you ready to start, Tom?
I'm ready when you guys are ready.
Okay.
Okay. I wasn't sure if it was gonna go full screen. I didn't know if it was still setting up. Thank you, guys. So as you guys are probably well aware, this is our second annual report that we've done in recent years. Our last one was a little delayed with a lot of changes. So we dropped that in, I think it was July of last year. This year, I'm a little more timely. I have one for you here at the end of March. And going forward, we'll continue to do this to kind of highlight and make the community aware of what the department's doing and what's going on with the department. So it's a fairly in-depth report. So what we did was we went ahead and made a slideshow kind of hitting each of the major points. And then if you guys have questions, I don't know, do you guys want to do it as we go? At the end? What's the preference from the council? To the end, how about? Okay. All right, so go ahead and hit the first slide. So the first section of the report talks about community participation. Creating opportunities for department members to interact with the public in capacities other than strict law enforcement encounters is critical to the department's efforts. These opportunities go a long way, helping to foster trust between department members and the public that we serve. In times of great stress or crisis, recognizing responding officers from previous pleasant interactions can go a very long way in de-escalating a situation. We can go, next slide. So in 2024, we participated in about 31 community events. I listed most of them in the actual report, either through providing dedicated police services, traffic control, or simply being present for community relations, such as what we do with the bike rodeos and stuff like that. And we also actually relaunched our bike patrol on Main Street to enhance our community presence. Go to the next one. The next topic we covered is staffing. As you guys are very well aware, we're budgeted for 36 members and six civilian staff. We also contract with full-time behavioral specialists from Mental Health America. And a part-time domestic violence victim's advocate is co-housed in the police station. This year, we experienced unprecedented staff movement and understaffing in 2024. We also took significant efforts to improve recruiting and retention and streamline hiring. And in 2025, the current PBA contract will expire, and we'll have to do more work to bolster our staffing. Go to the next slide. Went through some notable police incidents. I didn't have a picture of this because they're not really fun incidents. There's a lot of them in the report. It kind of hit some of the highlights. In 2024, we continued hard work to address and resolve a number of significant incidents and crimes. Some of the most notable would be the arrest of a man who is actively vandalizing businesses on Main Street, locating a 15-year-old with a loaded handgun, arresting a suspect who had seriously assaulted a homeless victim, making an arrest in a hate crimes assault, making two active arson arrests, meaning the arsons were actually in progress when we interrupted them, resolving a suicidal female who was holding a knife to her throat, and making multiple arrests in the 2022 murder of Lionel Pivkin. Our police department also participates with the Dutchess County Drug Task Force. We assign a detective to the Dutchess County District Attorney's Drug Task Force. The mission of the task force is to apprehend dangerous drug dealers throughout Dutchess County with a focus on reducing violent crime and overdose deaths. Several dangerous drug dealers who either sold drugs or resigned in Beacon were arrested in 2024, the most significant of which was a fentanyl dealer with a previous conviction for possession of explosive. He was found to be in possession of, A, felony weight drugs, and also an illegal gun, which is pictured there. And also, one of the things that I do want to highlight the task force has been bringing up, overdose deaths in Dutchess County were extremely high in 2023. The task force kind of revised, we actually had a press conference with the DA's office recently, kind of revised their way of operating to kind of process cases a lot faster. And right now, Dutchess County is seeing about a 50% reduction in those deaths. And we think it has a lot to do with that work that they're doing to try to interrupt the sale of those fentanyl products. Go to the next slide. This year, I included in the report some statistics from Mental Health America. It goes into more detail in the report, but our behavioral specialist corresponded with us to 184 calls for service and completed 130 follow-ups. 114 individuals were linked with post-police call services, including mental health treatment, treatment providers, case management, crisis shelters, and substance abuse treatment. Training, in the report, I went into, kind of detailed all of the training that we did for the year. A lot of our in-service training was the same as we did last year. As you guys know, we meet or exceed the state standards in just about every area that's required. This year, all of our staff completed all of our mandatory training successfully. And in 2025, going into 2025, we're gonna need to maintain kind of a high pace of training due to our staff turnover, people in new positions, new hires, and so on and so forth. One initiative that we actually got online in 2024 was our parking enforcement equipment initiative. I think if anybody reads the internet, you know that we do a terrible job of enforcing parking. And to be quite frank, in 2023 into 2024, we were not doing a great job. And we were very hampered by some really bad equipment that we had a contract for. This year, we turned that around. We changed our vendor to provide these backend services, and they also changed the vendor. The vendor provides a much better piece of equipment for actually writing the ticket. So now, when an officer goes out to try to write a parked car on Main Street, it doesn't take them five, 10 unsuccessful tries to get a ticket out. They can do it in one try. And as such, our parking ticket numbers have really increased a lot, you know, from double digits some months last year to triple digits most months this year. We can go to the next. Some future initiatives. One of them actually kind of came online as we were writing the report. Our new Axon body-worn cameras are out. They're working fantastically. The backend software is amazing. It's really doing everything we expected it to do. And one of the great things is it just uploads quick. It's like you don't even really have to think about it. So if there's an issue, somebody calls and says, hey, can you look into this? Rather than fighting with the computer all day to try to upload a video, it's there when you want it. So it's been fantastic. We will be deploying new electronic control weapons with that. We're gonna be purchasing three new hybrid patrol vehicles, which have actually already been obtained. And we're just waiting to get them all outfitted with radios and lights. And we are in the process of completing a major renovation to our gym and locker room. The lockers came in today, they look great. That was a 30-year-old, decrepit, rusted, bubbling floor situation down there, and it's really looking fantastic. So while I'm here, I will just have to give a shout out to Chris and Sue Tucker, and especially Mickey Manzi of the Highway Department. They're all doing a fantastic job for that with us. Go to the next slide. So the next thing I did was I kind of hit on some of our statistics. One of the things that's come up a lot is people want data from the police department. I have a lot of detailed data, and that's one thing I'm gonna want to actually engage you guys on, is kind of what you guys want to see in it. So hitting some major topics, I noted, you know, what we did this year, what we did last year. Our actual calls for service are actually down a bit. Our calls for alarms are down 15%. Domestic incidents, which is a great thing, are down 4%. Our mental health calls for service are actually up 9%. I wouldn't put like a value judgment on that because that could just be that, you know, people are more willing to reach out to us because they know we have a behavioral health specialist. So I don't think I want to say, uh-oh, that's a problem. Traffic stops are down last year, frankly, to a number that I don't really like. We're actually pushing it a lot harder because, again, that's another thing we hear a lot from the public. We need more traffic enforcement. We need more traffic enforcement, right? Anybody who's been to a traffic safety committee meeting knows that one thing that everybody wants is more traffic enforcement. So luckily, this year, we're actually up 41% from last year where we were. So we're looking really good on that this 2025. Our auto accidents were down 1%, so that's a little positive. Our case reports that we handled were down 10%, and our arrests made were up 9%. So I think it's a little more officer proactivity. Reported violent offenses, they rose very slightly from 2024, in 2024, from 2023. Most categories are fairly steady over time, with the exception of simple assault, which started rising in 2020, and it remains higher than previous levels. Go to the next slide. Property offenses is the next slide that we have for you. Most property offenses remain steady over time as well, with the exception of vandalism and larceny. We actually observed a continued steady decrease in vandalism, which we're very happy about. And then larceny rose from 2021 to 2022, filed by a fairly significant decline since. So we're still working that area, but it looks like hopefully we're on a trend downwards. We can go to the next slide. Aggravated assault cases and arrests. So in the next few slides, I'm gonna kind of compare the number of cases we took in to the number of arrests we made. And in 2024, arrests accounted for 63% of total aggravated assault cases. And one should think that should be noted, right, is you're looking at that chart in, I think it was 2021. Right. You can actually have more individuals arrested than you have cases because, you know, one of the limits of aggravated assault is that sometimes multiple people commit one assault, and that makes it aggravated assault. We can go to the next slide. Our simple assault cases, reported simple assaults remain higher than 2019 levels, but lower than 2022. Our arrests for simple assaults also rose slightly from 2023 to 2024. And statistics for violent offenses, such as robbery rate, weapons law violations, are included in my report, but they trend in the single digits. So if you always want to look into those, you can. But statistically, there's not a lot to kind of grab out of that. We can go to the next slide. So burglary arrests and cases. Burglary is one of the most common high-end property crimes that we see here in Beacon, even though it is still pretty low. There continues to be notable decline in the number of reported burglaries with approximately 41% decrease when comparing 2019 to 2024. So feeling pretty good on the burglary front as well. Can go to the next slide. Vandalism, as I had mentioned, destruction of property or vandalism is a property crime which can be a felony or a misdemeanor based upon the value of the property that's destroyed. There's been a 60% decrease in reported cases from 2019 to 2024. While the number of arrests have down slightly from 2023 to 2024, the number of reported cases decreased by far more. Go to the next. Larceny cases, reported larceny incidents have been increasing from 2019. The upward trend may have broken in 2023. From 2023 to 2024, we saw a decrease of approximately 26%, while arrests rose from 12 to 15. Just noting anecdotally, it does seem increasingly common for victims to decline to pursue charges, even when we've identified a suspect. We've had a few package theft cases where we worked it down, we're ready to make an arrest, and the victim says, eh, I don't really want to do it. You know, we've gotten some larcenies from stores where, all right, we've got the suspect, and they say, I don't want to press charges, I just don't want them to come back. So that causes a little bit of a disparity between arrests and cases when it comes to larcenies. We can go to the next slide. Use of force, while arrests have decreased from 2019, use of force has remained rather steady, likely because most instances don't stem from officer-initiated arrests, which have become more infrequent, but rather from crimes involving a victim or witness who called for help. In 2024, use of force incidents represented less than 10% of arrests and just 0.33% of total service calls. So going forward, in addition to our large initiatives that we outlined previously, the department will continue its mission to serve the community through our successful programs of community engagement and realistic focused training. We're going to seek to improve the output and precision of our traffic enforcement measures. And as always, we'll work closely with community members in the Dutchess County District Attorney's Office to respond to criminal activity and build cases which lead to successful interventions or criminal prosecutions where appropriate. Do you guys have any questions?
I'd like, thank you. I'd like to know what those two aliens did in the first slide to get arrested.
They went up to Officer Lawrence and asked for a photo op. And he was quite willing to oblige. It made a good one. A lot of likes on Facebook for that.
Yeah, they asked me for the photo op to arrest them, and I refused. But luckily, there was someone willing to do it.
He came up to me and said us bald guys have to stick together when we have photographs.
Can you say a little bit about your bike patrol plans for 2025? As far as you know them at this point, as the weather is starting to get warmer?
Yeah, so actually, we just put out the notification, short sleeves are acceptable. And when the weather is appropriate, Officer Lawrence should, if he's working, and we have the staffing, meaning if the dispatcher didn't qualify, and so we don't have to pull an officer off the road. When he is working days, he should be out there on the bike. And I also just kind of put out a department-wide survey to see if anybody was actually interested in going to the school this year because I'd like to get more officers available for that.
When you say going to the school, do you mean going into the school or just being in?
Oh, I'm sorry, the school to learn how to be a bike patrol officer.
Oh, I see, great, great.
Yeah, it's a fairly extensive school, actually. They have to ride up and downstairs and learn a lot of moves and stuff like that. It's not like we can't just tell you, like, hey, this is a good bike, and you're a good guy, take this.
So I'm understanding we currently have one officer who's trained.
That's correct. Well, we have more, but they've moved up in rank to where they're not available anymore.
I see.
They're in the detectives.
Got it.
Well, I wanted to say I was happy to see the bike relaunched, the bikes on Main Street. And even just the presence of the police on Main Street, I've noticed it more in the past, you know, like last year during the summertime. I wanted to ask, I also noticed in the written report, the flock license plate reader, that you got a couple, those are the cameras outside at the city lines? Is that what those are, or can you explain that?
That's correct, yeah. So what they are is they're license plate readers. They'll give a hit on a vehicle that's maybe suspect in a violent crime, a stolen vehicle, something along those lines. And we actually had one hit on that where we actually made an arrest in a violent domestic in New Jersey, and was able to get the person to custody.
Yeah, that was great. And how is the, with the sign-on bonus and the pay increases, have you seen any kind of traction or impact on that yet?
So we just did two interviews on Thursday with NYPD candidates. They don't have seven years on, so they're making pretty good money in the city. But we're, we'll, you know, see if we can offer them a better quality of life and see if we can get them across the finish line on that.
Good, good. I think that's for the most part, I think everything else was covered. Thank you.
Yeah, beyond those two that you already interviewed, do you have a sense of your other opportunities to potentially recruit new officers this year?
Well, the mass agility for the entire list for the last civil service list is on the 26th of next month. So the 26th of April, which is coming up very soon. Once that happens, we'll have a new list, and then we'll start going from there. I'm hoping to see some people on the Beacon Resident Preferred list so I can kind of get a crack at them before any other departments. But, you know, we just don't know until we have it.
Thank you. Yeah, it would be nice if, and I know that you've been keeping us up to date, so as you, as we kind of pass the end of April, and there's an opportunity either directly or through Chris, just to let us know how things are going. I think that would be appreciated.
For sure.
This is great. I really appreciate all the statistics and great reporting in here. I noticed in the staffing section, you talk about the need for recruitment and retention. And we talked about this a couple of times, I think, when we were talking about recruitment in different reports. But it'd be very interesting to me to hear or to see in the reports going forward. It's all financial, it seems like, retention strategies, sign-on bonuses and the like. But there are potentially other strategies to encourage retention, you know?
I think there are.
Staff culture, and it'd be great to hear about, you know, and even like feedback from the officers too towards that end.
Yeah.
I just, you know, I think that there are other things that create a culture of wanting to maintain what we've got, the good things that are here. So it'd be nice to see that included in some, maybe more qualitative if it's not quantitative, but just some reports. but just some reporting on retention strategies.
I mean, right now, you know, we are looking into, you know, one of the things we also kind of lack for our officers is opportunities to participate in kind of specialization. Being a small department, it's hard to specialize. You know, you can't really take a guy and say, okay, you're only going to do this. But we are looking for some opportunities, you know, going forward. It's sort of something we have to kind of discuss and make sure we have all the resources in line before we kind of publicly announce something. So that's why I'm a little hesitant to kind of bring up some of those initiatives, because if they fall through, then it kind of can actually have a, you know, a degradation on morale, so. You did put in for a drone grant, though, we're putting in today.
Maybe everyone will be excited about the bike opportunity.
Yeah, I'm hoping, you know, there are people that, you know, a lot of officers really do like it.
Yeah.
Officer Lawrence, who does it, is, really does enjoy being out there, so.
You had asked a question about what kind of data we would like to see. I think one suggestion I have, and you tell me about capacity here, is to see some of this data mapped along locations around the city and also time of day. I would say particularly traffic stops and calls overall would be the two areas I would be most interested in seeing. And, you know, this is to try and, for me, understand how to sort of take into account anecdotal, you know, concerns. I hear from folks about certain neighborhoods, perhaps, and, yeah, have some data to contextualize that.
Yeah. So one kind of issue, right, time of day is pretty easy. One issue with location is sort of creating, how are we going to define it, right?
Right.
By street, by neighborhood, how do we kind of define what that looks like? Usually what will happen is, you know, we'll have a complaint in an area, hey, we have this big problem, how many calls have we gotten there? And then we can kind of narrow it down to, to like what we've received, how to respond. But like kind of putting it into a context of like, we have this many calls here, that many calls there, that many calls there, is kind of a little difficult. And I mean, if people have ideas, I'm certainly interested to kind of hear them, if there's like a, hey, we want to map it this way, we want to map it that way.
And I am not a data nerd, but I know there are many data nerds at this table and also in the city, so I'm guessing, hopefully by saying it out loud, someone will come up with a suggestion.
Will this report be available online for the public to look at?
Yeah, it is right now.
Okay, great.
Yeah.
Well, I think it's a, it's a real improvement in terms of communicate, communicating to the public as well as the council as to really what's going on, what's happening. And I'm really glad we're doing this on a regular basis. Thank you.
Yeah, appreciate how thorough this report is and your last one as well.
Sort of related to what Paloma asking, I know that you mentioned the report, I couldn't find it at the moment, that having access to the New York State Department of Transportation data that helps with targeted traffic enforcement, can you say a little bit more about that?
Sure. In my last report, I had mentioned that we were kind of trying, going to try to look into, trying to align our traffic enforcement efforts, not only with public complaints, but also with auto accidents, because that's really good practice, to try to address traffic concerns that might be leading to accidents. We're trying to figure out a way to kind of do that, and then sort of by accident, I discovered, and they don't really advertise it to the police, it's more for studies, that DOT actually takes all of our traffic data and puts it on a map. And there's actually a link to every one of our traffic accidents on this thing, but you actually have to apply for access to it. It's not just like open to the public. I did get that. It's been a little difficult to kind of process. I will say one thing that really stands out is that as far as auto accident data, everything pales in comparison to Main Street. So that's, that's one thing that I took away, you know, instantly, is that the great majority of our auto accidents do occur on Main Street. Can I ask you guys one question?
Sure.
So for some of the things, because I track them monthly for my monthly reports, I gave monthly statistics, right, calls for mental health, calls for alarms, such and such like that. And then going through it, I was like, does this kind of gum up the works? Is it, is it better for you guys to have like a yearly comparison, like what we put on the slide? Or do you like the month-to-month data? Like, I'm just wondering if you guys would find it easier if I just gave the totals for the year, or what thoughts are on that?
So I, you know, let one of the geeks speak. I saw the monthly data, it wasn't as interesting, right? Because in order to say what's patterns, you'd have to compare, you know, summer to prior summer. Didn't think so. I think the annual data is just fine.
Yeah.
The other geeky thing is, I'm trying to think what your dataset looked like. It would be, I know your dataset for events, or whatever you call them, calls, would be a time and a, you know, an issue, which is easy to do. You'd have to get location to do locations, and that might be hard. But think about it, right? It really depends on what you're recording, and I assume you're putting it in the computer, and then you can get the data. But it, you know, might be harder.
Right. We record it by, I mean, we recorded, carried it by house number, if that's relevant, or by the street. So that does kind of make it a little difficult to say, you know, because some streets stretch multiple areas of Beacon, so it does make it a little more tedious to kind of.
Yeah, and you also want the data to be unidentifiable, right?
Okay. So next year, we'll just, year overall?
I would think so.
I kind of thought that too, but I did it in the last report, and I didn't want to take it out without kind of talking to you guys.
I mean, like, look at your use of force. We're talking about two a month on average? I mean, come on, that's not going to tell you much to look at it by month, so.
Yeah, if you, if you, and look, I assume you are looking at the monthly rate, because you're managing a month. If there are any interesting trends by seasons that are useful to share with us, then maybe call those out, but I would agree, I don't need to see every month.
I appreciate that feedback, because I thought the same thing, especially when I added a third year to it. I'm like, next year, this is going to get messy.
No, but it's great to be able to see it, kind of compare over the years, and particularly the farther away we get from COVID, which was, for many reasons, easy to see as an exceptional year, meaning outside of the norm now, we have years, kind of the trends and what's actually the reality of where we are.
Right.
Okay. If I could, I just want to take the opportunity to say, Tom has only been in this position now for 10 months. He started in June last year, and he's been doing an amazing job at rebuilding the morale of the department. He had a hand in the locker room as well, and he's been managing our staffing crisis as well as he can. And I just want to thank you for everything you've been doing.
Appreciate that.
And the recent solving of the murders, just as a testament to the, the hard work of our department.
Yeah, and that's something, you know what, while I'm here, I'll highlight that, right? That spanned multiple people. We have retired members who worked very hard on that, who are being called back to testify all the way into current detectives. So it's something that really, those guys and women worked really hard on, and we're pretty proud of the work that they did on that, even though it took them, well, not even though it took a long time, it took a long time, and that's part of what we're proud of.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. The next set of things will involve Mark Price. We're going to talk about several items at Park Projects, right? Are you going to do that? Chris going to do that? You're going to do that? Okay, thank you, Mark.
Thank you, Pete. Good evening, everyone. So I think I'm here tonight because we have a couple of contracts that are going to come in front of you guys, probably to look at today and next week to approve, and just it seems like a perfect time to give a little update on what's going on in the parks and mostly with Capitol Project. So those two contracts to be reviewed are for two components of the South Avenue Park Rehab, the court surfacing and fencing. Those were the winning bids and the contracts we want to award for that work. That's part of, I believe, five components. If I was to count the court lighting, we're going to replace court lighting, resurface both courts, replace all the fencing on both courts. There's another one, another bid that's due this coming week. It should have been back last week, but we needed to make, make a last-minute revision, so we left it out for another week, just so we could get some competitive bids on that. That'll be awarded in this week, and then we'll be basically set for the full project, which the bid that's still out is for all the site work, which includes the prep work for the new restroom that's on order. So new restroom, ton of site work to make some of those failing retaining walls go away, the tie-in for the bathroom, and then basically brand-new courts in that park. So that's just an overview on the screen of the park currently. But essentially, we're going to be reworking that whole South Avenue side of the park and be done by early summer. So it should look quite nice, and the inclusion of a bathroom is, is kind of a big, big plus for the park. So it'll look very much like the other parks and amenities and, and sort of updates. The restroom itself will include a matching mural to the other two parks, which I've already spoke to the artists. And once the project dust settles, we can figure out when we're going to do that, but we'll do that probably late in the summer, early fall, with a similar community participation of the painting of it. So that, that's sort of the cherry on top for the whole project, which should be completed by mid to late summer, completely. So that's, those two contracts, while I was here, I was going to speak to the other sort of, you know, medium-sized project, which is going to be a rehabbing of the skate park this spring. It's actually supposed to start in a couple of weeks, April 11th. We have a contractor coming in to do a full repaving of that park, which will then set up installation of some new skate park features and fixtures. I think they're to be delivered sometime in June. And we are including in that rehab, a, one of the approved participation in government projects will be a component of the skate park, the art wall that was proposed, we're implementing over there. So we'll be installing some, some concrete fixtures and building some panels to include probably about a 48-foot-long, six-foot-tall art wall that can be used by the public. So that will really, you know, sort of transform that corner as well. And that hopefully will be done, like I said, fixtures are coming in June, so probably mid-June. So it's going to be a busy spring between those two projects. And it's kind of the update I have for now.
Well, and the backdrop for why Mark is here tonight is, we had four, four bids out. One is for restroom cleaning, and you may remember in 2021, we started cleaning the bathrooms and reopen them, which has been very successful. That three-year contract we were under has expired, so we needed to go back out to bid. So we will be bringing you a contract for Frank's Professional Maintenance for a three-year cost of approximately 55, you have it in your memo, it's, I think it's 55,000.
Fifty-two, five, four, five.
Great, 52,545. It's 17,500 a year. That's for cleaning bathrooms, also doing the visitor center, which we reopened, doing some cleaning at the settlement camp. This is a good news story for us, because it's a local company, and they were also the low bidder, had good references, and were ready to move forward. On South Avenue Park, that project goes all the way back to 2020 and 2021 capital programs. The council at that time wanted to establish the first public restroom that wasn't just a porta potty there. So Mark has ordered a beautiful manufactured restroom that will be installed probably later this summer. The site work that he talked about is being bid to prepare the area for that and to redo some of the collapsing retaining walls along the tennis court and the basketball court. In addition, we're going to be changing all of the fence mesh on both courts and resurfacing both of them. So we have two of those three bids. The court surfacing and court fencing came back last week. They are both just a little below our engineer estimate and budget, which is great news. Our site work bids will be coming back on Thursday, so we don't have that name for you yet, but we'll be filling it in. And we want to approve those at the next meeting so that we can schedule the work and get it done before basketball season starts. So you're going to see, you know, again, project one isn't on here because we, that's lighting that we did through a cooperative agreement with Sourcewell.
Yeah, Sourcewell.
Sourcewell, that our attorneys worked with us on, and then you'll be approving projects two, three, and four, and the restroom has already been ordered and will be arriving once the site work has been done. So we hope to reopen the facility and give it a much-needed facelift this summer.
And we'll have, we'll have news about park closing or amenities not being usable once we have a better timeline established and have all our contracts back and stuff.
So once we sit down with the contractors, we'll have an idea of their detailed schedule. We'll also be having an event where we do a groundbreaking for the council. So we, and, and some of this was funded by Assembly Member Jonathan Jacobson, so we'll be inviting him to join us as well.
Even if we didn't invite him, he would be there, as we well know, and are always grateful. So just to make sure, council, move forward with these, and okay to bring the fourth one when we get the bids directly to the meeting.
So you'll have a memo like the ones that are in your packet for the one that doesn't have it currently?
And if you have an issue, obviously, we can defer it at that meeting, but I don't think there should.
Yeah, I have no problem with that. I did have a few small questions, but I'm, yeah, happy with the overall plan. In terms of the bathroom cleaning, I assume, you know, knowing this is a three-year contract, that the new bathroom is included in all of this? Great.
Yeah.
And I had made a suggestion a while back for additional signage on the bathrooms to indicate hours that it's open, and potentially even for the visitor center to indicate that there, there is a bathroom in the visitor center. I'm just wondering if that idea had been picked up at all, or if there, as an update?
Sure, yeah. I mean, signage is yet to be ordered for the new one, but, you know, that's definitely a note that it's open seven days, dawn to dusk, or is good. The hours vary slightly, but I think at the very least, we have some signage that makes reference to the restrooms being open same, same time as the parks essentially, but that's helpful for folks.
Yeah, I think so. I think I've noted that I just seem to happen to always be there when they're not open. And I think just, you know, having that enforced for the public, I'm sure I'm not the only one, about when, when they are open, would be useful. And I think my other, oh, my other question was just, if you could remind me where on the site at South Avenue the bathroom's going to be? I thought I saw it on the map, but I wasn't sure.
Closest to basketball court. So if you're familiar with the park, there's a electrical panel that sits there.
Sort of between the parking lot.
Between the parking lot and the court.
Okay, great. Where the porta potty is.
And then we, part of having the building there is, we can incorporate that electrical infrastructure into the building, so it's no longer just out.
Yeah. And, and retooling the fencing, so essentially coming up, the parking area is ADA compliant for the restroom, and then level with the court. So we're going to redo the court entrances to the bathroom side. We'll have access to the other side like it is traditionally, but we'll kind of turn the courts, courts around, so it makes a little more sense to the parking area versus the corner of the park there.
That's great. And will it have a water bottle filling station?
It has a water bottle and water fountain station.
Can you remind me how trash cans work at that park? Are they under Royal Carding, or are they ones that are maintained elsewhere? The city maintains them. Is there any thought of, is that going to, they'll be taken out, they need to be taken out and then put back kind of roughly where they are? Is there also any changes you're considering around those? I'm just curious, kind of as we think about use.
We're, we're replacing most of those. So the, the old barrels that we have are old juice barrels that we get from, I think, an apple juice company. So we're ordering a whole new round of them because they've gotten dented and rusted. And they're just interspersed around the park. You'll see them on every part of that park, and our guys actually just drive through and dump them each week. So I shouldn't interfere with our picking that up. We, we are going to have to close the parking lot, part of the parking lot, for when the crane comes in to put in place the restroom.
Question for you on the, on the options here, it's amazing the differences in some of these bids that you see, three, four times differences. So it makes you wonder, is it apples to apples? I mean, is it, you know, the surfacing, is it the same? The, the other fencing companies, are there any differences that are worth noting in terms of materials utilized, duration, warranty, et cetera, that goes into accepting not necessarily the lowest bid? Any other reason to consider a higher bid?
You should.
Yeah. So when it, when it comes to these types of public works projects, the city is obligated under state law to award it to the lowest responsible bidder. And so usually, when the bids come in and they see there's a big difference, those those bidders get contacted, make sure that they understood that they didn't make any errors in their bid. They vet their qualifications and references to make sure that they've done similar work before, and they have those. Generally, there's usually either a number of projects that they've done similar, they're required to list those in the bid responses. And so there is a vetting process to make sure that they are capable, have experience with it, understand the parameters of the project, and that there's not going to be, hopefully, any issues.
Weston and Samson are consultants on the two in front of you who did diligence last week and contacted references and referencing contracts. I had some questions related to the surfacing, and they took a couple of steps further to confirm that the lowest bidder had qualifications and, you know, had given us a memo in their competence. Both were, you know, capable of the work.
And to meeting, I guess, the bare minimum required in the request for proposals. But it still begs the question if there's some superior strategy product that could be utilized. It's not necessarily reflected in this vetting process.
It would be.
It's state law.
Yeah, the city would need to, it would create liability to not go with the lowest responsible bidder as long as they meet the qualifications and have, you know, vetted it out.
So it's, yeah, so it's a matter of the requirements.
It's a matter of meeting the requirements.
It's a matter of what requirements we set.
Yeah. And for example, with these goods, they had to have experience in similar types of jobs. They needed to show that they would be able to have sufficient workforce to get the job done. And so there are some of those. And that is a valid concern. The city is, however, constrained by competitive bidding requirements.
Yeah, so it puts the requirement on the city to do the work, to know what it wants. If it wants something better, if it's, but, you know.
Well, there's a specification in the bid. So they're bidding to the product and the item amount that we've put in. And there are guardrails after we start the project. Firstly, they have to put a performance bond. So we actually have pulled companies' performance bonds when they haven't done a good job. And you'll remember that with the staircase out here that got rebuilt multiple times. Well, that ended up not costing us any more, and we got a very good product at the end. Also, the engineer has to review all the shop drawings and submittals to make sure that whatever they're proposing is what was in the bid or its equivalent or better. And then we do inspections as well. So when there's concrete installed, there's testing of the concrete to make sure it meets the PSI standards that are required. If there's asphalt, it has to be done in a certain manner, and we test that. So again, I think there, you never know what you're going to get. Low bid is probably not the best way to do this. I would love to have local companies have a greater preference when we do these bids. But we do have some things to make sure it doesn't go sideways.
And oftentimes, they're also required to do what's called a maintenance bond. So they're required to, you know, either put up a bond or warranty the work that they do. So if it ends up falling apart or having a materials issue in a year, the city would have that to rely on to remedy it.
You give a good example, though, Chris, like talking about a concrete product. If the city wanted, for example, there are now lower carbon intensity concretes that are out there. And if we wanted to specify that, we would have to do the work, feel confident in it, and have that be the requirement that bidders would have to meet. We're not, an open base minimum requirement is not going to have bidders be able to compete if they're bidding for a more expensive, potentially environmentally superior product.
And am I correct in understanding that something like that would go in our procurement policy? Or is something, is what we're discussing separate from that?
It's largely separate. It's most on the specifications of the product. I mean, there are industry standards and state requirements for concrete and certain products like that to make sure that they can support loads. And so when they go out to test that concrete or those products, they make sure that they meet, you know, generally manufacturer specifications, specifications in the drawings, as well as any, you know, minimum safety requirements as well.
And supply is an issue, too. You have to make sure you can get that in this area. And again, a lot of the projects, like the stuff we're doing on Fishkill and Teller Avenue, DOT has very detailed specifications on every product that we use. So I don't know that we're even allowed to use that. This has very minimal concrete. It's just a little bit.
No, it's a broader issue. Three-some raising it just for the procurement insights that it does speak to. It does put the homework on the city. You know, the burden is on the city to do the additional work. If there's something superior that meets requirements.
And I think you need to have an engineer who is willing to say that product has the performance standards that we would want. I mean, you don't want products that aren't going to have the life, the useful life.
Of course. I mean, that's right, but that's probably the homework.
I wanted to, I had that same question, Jeff, because I was just amazed at the difference in the bids throughout these quotes. Wanted to ask, just with the skate park, since that is coming up, is that noticed already that that's, I'm assuming the skate park's going to be closed when they're resurfacing that?
Yeah, well, it sort of, in a way, there'll be a small period where it's closed for the repaving. We're going to use some of the smaller fixturing in the interim until the newer stuff comes. It'll still be open and usable then. It'll just be in its smaller form for the months until June. And then probably a day or two when our new fixturing, our larger fixturing comes and is installed. So it won't be as interrupted as the work at South Avenue, but a couple of days in April and a couple of days.
Because I just, the kids are off from school last day 11th and not back until after Easter. So that following, that week, the April 11th you mentioned, they're off. So just to keep that into consideration.
Yeah, we should be able to get everything in back and usable, you know, that we're keeping in the park in a day or two once the pavement's set up.
And then one other question. Is there going to be lined pickleballs separate for the, on the tennis? Are they going to be with the tennis?
The plan for South Avenue's new pickleball lineups will be, I believe we have room for four. We're going to be using the tennis nets as the barrier between two, and I'm going to order rolling nets. So essentially, a bit of an upgrade in that we'll be using standard pickleball nets and doubling our pickleball space.
Thank you. My pickleball friends will be happy. That's all I had.
All right, folks. Cool.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, these are all exciting projects. Thank you.
So just remember.
This has been a lot of work for Mark, and I just want to say he's doing a great job.
Yeah, thank you, Mark.
A lot of this is capital investment, so not in our operating budget, but significant investments in our parks. There are operating items. They're also proving, right, the cleaning, which is a big step up for us. So I think these are all good things to do, but I'm also mindful when the next budget comes. So I'm just telling you upfront. Okay. So next one is an appointment of Nick Krigowski. That's the position of a program assistant. Chris, you'll tell us about what program?
I think we should talk about Dar Sims.
Sorry, let's back up. You're going to tell us about the appointment of Dar Sims as temporary fire lieutenant. Sorry.
Well, I'd love to. So we have four lieutenants in our fire department, and one of the lieutenants is on leave with an injury. And we don't know that they're going to be back for a while. In the interim, we would like to put someone in the lieutenant position so that there's another person who can take those shifts, and we're not just paying overtime for the three lieutenants who remain. The chief interviewed the three people who are on the civil service list for lieutenants, and Dar Sims was the highest scoring. He's been in fire and EMS for 15 years and previously worked at Castle Point until, I think, five years ago. He's been with us, I think, for five years and has done extensive training. In fact, he's an instructor for many of the fire service items. And we would like to make him a temporary lieutenant. And when the other lieutenant eventually retires, we think he would also be a great permanent lieutenant. But for now, we'd make him temporary, and we'd like to bring that to you Monday. And he's already been serving informally in that capacity. He really is well-respected by the department and very effective. So you have his resume and also a memo from Fire Chief Lucchese in your packets.
Chris has a great sense of humor.
I believe you.
He does.
So he was with the Beacon Fire Department, and then he had left and is coming back?
No, previously, he was with Castle Point. I'm sorry. And then he came to Beacon Fire. He's been with us since 2020. And.
I'm reading his resume. That's, it's different.
So his resume has a typo on it. The Castle Point was the one that he did from 2012 to 2020, and then he came here in 2020, and he's been, he's been a firefighter with us.
That's what confused me. I'm like this, so he's been.
It confused all of us.
Assistant Castle Point Fire Department. He's been here?
Yes.
Okay. Since 2020.
And he's also a marine combat veteran. So he's, he's got a lot of really strong skills, and we're really excited.
An advanced EMT as well, I saw, which is great, too.
Yeah. And he does, he does a lot of training on his own. He just seems kind of voracious on learning new skills, and that really has set him apart from, the other two candidates are great, but he was really strong.
Now that I understand the timeline, he needs to fix his resume.
Yeah. No, sorry about that. I only quoted that at about 5:30, and then I had to figure out what it meant. All right.
Okay. And then you tell us about Nick now.
Yeah, Nick Krigowski. We're proposing for an appointment to municipal program assistant, which is an entry-level position we've created with civil service that supports our HR director and also helps with our finance department. Nick worked with us part-time while he was going to college. He graduated with a degree in cybersecurity. And then he decided he had been around HR enough that he wanted to do human resources. So we are proposing to make him permanent, and he will be continuing the great work he's done on digitizing a lot of the records that we have. One of the issues with our records management is things are very difficult to find, and we use a lot of space downstairs. And he's been going through with various departments and figuring out what can be digitized and then disposed of. So, and he has been a great support to Sarah Morris, our HR director.
I noticed he's provisional. Is that to do with civil service and timing?
Yeah, you're provisional for the first six or nine months. And Sarah's going to slap me for not knowing that, but it's one of those. And then you become permanent. There's like a probationary period. But, I mean, the nice thing about Nick is he's been with us for three years, and we know him, and we can rely on him, and he's smart. And I think he's a great fit.
Is this role part-time or full-time?
This is a full-time position.
And sorry if I missed this. This is a new position?
No, it was funded through his temporary position, and then we just, we, there's enough in the budget to cover the full-time. This is an entry-level position that doesn't pay a lot. So I think we had put in for a half-time person, but at a rate that was higher than what he's making. So we can get him for full-time for what we put in the part-time HR.
But prior to him being here in the program, the other program for three years, this was not an existing position?
No, it was a part, no, because we just created the HR director in 2022. That was only a part-time position.
Got it. I guess I'm, really what I'm asking is, you know, creating this full-time position, even though it's from what has been a part-time position for a long time, increasing the capacity of the HR department?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. But it's within the budget that we allocated for this year.
Right. Okay.
And it does, it helps, for instance, there are letters that we have to get out to retirees. There are healthcare notifications that we have to get out. And he can handle those for Sarah so that she can deal with other employee issues.
Yeah, that's great. Thank you.
And even the digitizing, that would be great, to get it organized electronically?
We didn't even know what we had in the back. So it's not just about, like, making space. It's about having access to records so we can find them.
Lee and I discovered some cool maps.
You'll assist the building department as well?
Eventually, yeah, because we're digitizing in that department. So he's downstairs, he can help finance building, but primarily, he's with HR. Yeah.
Great. I'm glad to both keep him on. He's been great so far and to find a role that also kind of continues to kind of have him lean into the areas where we have a need as well. So it's a great fit all around.
Okay. Next one's a planning board appointment. So James from Ullin actually applied a couple of years ago. I talked to him about joining at that time, and he had a, wasn't quite ready yet. He had some work-related, you know, demands and family demands. He said he's interested now. Jim is in the lighting business, so it's not directly, I wouldn't call him a planning professional or related, but it's sort of like, you know, tangentially related because he does architectural lighting, he does theater lighting. So I would call him more of a lay appointment as opposed to professional appointment. Otherwise, you know, it came right off the group that was applying for planning board, and I'm psyched that he's willing to do it now and has the time. So I just moved him forward, and you're all good. Lisanne Rambaut around the corner for you.
I can vouch for him. I know him, and he's a great guy, and I think he'll be a great asset to the planning board.
Yeah, good.
Yeah, I was just curious, are there any other things that he's done in Beacon sort of that he's going to evolve with that you know, Lee or George?
I don't think so. I mean, he's done a lot of sound and lighting for various events and so on, but I think it seems like he's probably not working as much, you know, outside the city. So I think he has more time, and I think his kids are getting older, too. So he's got more time on his hands.
Yeah, I think you've described it right.
Great, thank you.
And I was joking with him earlier that he lives next door to the chair of the planning board, so probably there might be some undue pressure that we should try to spare him from. So I don't know if that has anything to do with it.
That's a correct disclosure. Is it like to the right? I think it's to the right because to the left was, is, yeah, anyway. That's what I understand as well. Okay. Is he behind you? Is it like directly?
Pretty much, yes.
Well, you've got two problems, right? Two conflicts. Anyway. Last one is a draft resolution for us urging the Senate and the Assembly to pass a packaging reduction bill. This is actually a revision, a bringing up again of something that was on last year that we actually supported. And Christian, will you tell us a little bit more about it?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. So yes, this is basically a second version of the state law that went through and did not pass. I believe it just kind of timed out last year. There's been some minor revisions to the one that the council reviewed and supported. For example, there's actually more toxic chemicals that would be eventually phased out of packaging. It would all, however, I think kind of in a give, the state legislature wants maybe this to pass. Instead of reducing 50% of packaging within 12 years, it would now be 30%. It would create an advisory council. A lot of the things from the previous version are still similar. There would be fees for producers as well as incentives for those producers to reduce their packaging quantity. And also producer fees would, could be used to assist public and private collection systems. It's a very similar one that the council reviewed last year, just some minor updates to it.
Okay.
I'm so happy to support this.
Yeah, I think it's fine. All right? Cool. That's it. And we survived the warmth in the building. So next meeting is next Monday. It will be a formal meeting.
It's going to be cold again in two days.
At seven here. And then for the next workshop, we will bring the ADUs and the Route 52 items forward. I know that was a hold because we just didn't have the city attorney, not Christian. We have him, but we didn't have Nick, who's been working on that issue. And we also didn't have Natalie, who I think is still in Hawaii.
Can I ask a clarifying question about that, Lee? If we, as council members, have particular questions about options for the items that have been discussed, that we're going to discuss with the planner and with Natalie and with Nick, can we, is it okay, maybe Christian, for us to email? Like, not to have a discussion over email, but just send those questions in advance so that the experts kind of have those to be able to kind of share thoughts?
I'd appreciate you waiting till after this week so Nick can have a vacation. He, I am really trying, yeah, I'm really trying to force him to take his vacation time and not call us every two hours.
Yes, I appreciate that.
But he does, we have been telling the department staff to leave him alone.
But next week?
After, yeah, after this week.
So next week, we can do that. Yeah, just looking to try to have something rather than sometimes we ask questions and they have to come back in two weeks. So if we already know of things.
Well, yeah, you and I have chatted.
Right, yeah, I'm thinking of our conversations.
There might be several options to go about, you know, how do you transition? Or how do you phase something in on some of the areas that we're talking about? So I think that's worthwhile. Yeah, he was doing emails today because we have a court ruling, and I was like, go away, will you? Anyway. Okay, that's all I got, and I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
And our next meeting is.
Oh, I did that.